Good evening, everyone. If you get a chance to look over the charges before September, I believe we're holding for one quarter for this year. One of the most important things that happens, of course, is September. It is the usual if we get the pension stage A. If we did get that and we found that they lost, so that's always a big thing. John, that is really important for us. Any questions, any concerns? Everybody get all those additional reports. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything about tax collections?
I'm not aware of anything notable on the tax collective report. As you know, the regular real estate continues to collect its collection through December. And then the interns are for building permits and other actions that result in increases in assessment. And then, of course, per capita from July 1st is being collected. Okay, we can move on to the departments. Chief Winchester, if I may please, for you.
I'm really being... I'll just mention that thefts and frauds are usually the highest crime that occurs in places in the township. It seems to trend every month, every month during the year. I just wanted to point out to anybody who's listening today, might receive a call. The IRS, the federal government will never call you and ask for money. They never call you and ask for any kind of form of compensation or call you to tell you that you have a warrant for your arrest. If you receive any of those calls, I guarantee you that the frauds, all they're trying to do is make your hard money. There's thousands of times a day that they're successful. And I see it all the time here in the township as well, where thousands and thousands of dollars are being lost. There are these frauds that individuals are calling and pretending that something occurred. They can find out a lot of information about you by just doing a regular search on the internet. So oftentimes how these crimes are successful is they convince you that they aren't who they are and they know what they're talking about. You can Google my name. You can find out where I resided in college. You know, so it's, and they have associations. Never move unless they try and find information. You know, don't Google my name and it'll come up, "Yeah, I have a friend named Bobby Billings." Just because his name, my name, I appeared together at some point a few times in the news. So they're slinging what they do, but I can guarantee you that if you receive a call, it's going to be big. The FBI will have a call to tell you that they need money from you relative to someone that he may know and that it may be in their custody. So please, if you have any questions, please get ahold of us. As you probably know, the chances of a successful prosecution are, you find some play water. You'll win before we get a case against one of these fraudsters. But we can get that information. We like that information because then we can see any kind of trends, try to recognize any trends, and push out to the general community, "Hey, there's these phone calls that are going around." So if this happens to you, you receive any calls, please just give us a call. Call the nonemergency number. You're not bothering us. It's what we're here for. We want your calls and we can document everything and try and identify trends. If you have a question that you're not sure if this is legitimate or not, please give us a call and we can help you out or reassure that it is a fraud. I will quickly say, the one individual that had come in a couple of years ago into the office was actually still on the phone with the fraudster who was claiming to be Madison Winchester, the chief of police. You know, and they were very convincing because she had to come in and was face to face with me. And I was able to, you know, convince her that it's not me. I'm here. So please, just give us a call if you have any questions about that. One of the things, too, the standard, if you get a package full of demands on it, just please get it off your porch. It's impossible. That's still trending throughout the country, but in the county especially. And like I said last month, they seem to be focusing in on cell phones. They're quick, they're easy, they grab them, they go. And we're getting ring camera footage, which is great if you haven't, but we still need to identify these individuals. And most times they're transient back from this area, so it's very difficult to identify them. But they are coming, they're grabbing, and they're gone. So if you do order anything on hand, please make arrangements to get that off the porch or receive it right from the media delivery inventory. The only thing I have on the agenda, ID, is the Trumpertree event. We are having the Trumpertree event. This, um, this coming, I'm sorry, this month, October 25th, Friday, October 25th, from 5:00 to 6:30, it's going to be at the Government for the Media School. It's in cooperation with Shillington Police Department, Breckon Police Department. Since our national night out was canceled due to weather, we, you know, this is a scaled down event, but we encourage people to come out, bring children, if you don't have children to bring, stop out. We're going to have some hot dogs, some chips, candy, of course. And I think I convinced Mr. McNichols to come as well, so you can get some candy from him. But it'll be fun. If you've never been to anything like this, I've never actually done it, but it's Trumpertree. We pop our trunks, we hand out candy, hand out hot dogs, have good conversations, and just have fun. And I think the PTO down at that location, that government is going to be having an event as well that night. So they've already reached out to me and said that there could be some March crowds and they come and go to each event. And I think that's a great idea and I welcome that. And so, yeah, if you know anything, come, it's going on the 25th, October, 5:00 to 6:30, stop down, get some candy from Mr. McNichols.
Thank you. Moving on to the fire department. Chief Dean is not here. Do you want to comment? Thank you. I did get some information from the fire department that is on your G drive about the number of calls in the past month. Also, there's information on the new engine that is now at Glick. Commissioner Bill Miller had been out with the fire department to view the engine before it was delivered. It is being outfitted now. Upfitting was in the motion, the original motion, to authorize the lease of this vehicle. This is a leased turnback vehicle. It's a sister engine to the other leased turnback vehicle that we have. Well, if you have any questions, there were no fire losses for the past month, which I think is wonderful. If you have any questions on that information, please let me know. And again, I'll consult with the captains to get answers for you. Also, in regard to apparatus, item D, as the board knows, the board had authorized earlier this year to use Fireline as a broker or soliciting others to purchase the Tower 42. The fire department was recommending also an additional broker be authorized, not to use at the same time, but as in case one is successful while the other is not, arranging for a purchase. These are brokers that keep track of other municipalities and fire companies that are looking for apparatus of certain types, and they try to match up the seller with the buyer. This particular broker is called Grinley Mountain Fire Apparatus LLC, and the fire department is requesting authorization to use them as a broker if they are successful instead of Fireline.
Do you have a chance to review that contract?
I did, and I have no issue with the word "authorizing" entry into that agreement. Both agreements are non-expensive, so it's not as though one contract would prevent brokers entering into a separate purpose. Well, depending on the broker, but these brokers don't require exclusivity. So if one broker finds a buyer, then they'll get their commission, and you can finally agree with other broker and vice versa. It's not limited to two, but right now we're considering two.
The only thing that kind of jumped out at me is that there's a tendency to know for what sale costs makes them pay them their fees. Is that long enough?
I think that would be an administrative requirement. Let's talk about the...
If they start charging things, if I remember correctly, we don't pay them within 10 days.
Well, 10 days from when we receive the funding.
The wording, I think, is what the sale consummates. Because I would have been with you if they would have explicitly said, "Well, we'll receive the funding," I would have felt better about it. But it's like, when is that sale consummated?
It would be when the money is changed and when the bill of sales is muted.
Okay. If we feel good about the 10 days, that's great. That's a long trip.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it as long as the administration can get that payment out within the 10 days and feel confident. Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Baddoor?
Yes.
Mr. Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Ral? Yes. Thank you. The next item we have under the fire department is, if anyone might have noticed, the fire station has made considerable progress since our last meeting. And I will say, Baldwin Construction is really plugging their way at it. They have submitted a pay application for a total of $1,045,526.56, and we are requesting authorization to release that bonus. Mr. Baddoor?
Yes.
Mr. Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Ral? Yes. Thank you.
Okay. If we feel good about the 10 days, that's great. That's a long trip.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it as long as the administration can get that payment out within the 10 days and feel confident.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Baddoor?
Yes.
Mr. Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Ral? Yes. Thank you. The next item we have under the fire department is, if anyone might have noticed, the fire station has made considerable progress since our last meeting. And I will say, Baldwin Construction is really plugging their way at it. They have submitted a pay application for a total of $1,045,526.56, and we are requesting authorization to release that bonus. Mr. Baddoor?
Yes.
Mr. Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Ral? Yes. Thank you. If anyone's interested, you may have noticed that the detention basin that was full of cattails up against Wealth Road is completely gone, and that is, that was totally designed. The township is implementing one of the newer stormwater measures. The parking lot that where, not, apparatus will not be parked there, but personal vehicles or when people come for training, et cetera, that parking lot underneath it is a stormwater structure, quite a complex one, a series of pipes, and then that will dissipate the water more slowly and help preserve the stream and the wetlands across the road. So that, we're hoping that that parking lot will be paved by Election Day, not for voters to park in, but so that the contractor can get their personal vehicles in there to leave more room for voters. Voting will be taking place here, and so we're trying to get, make as much room as possible for the anticipated, it will be a high turnout. Onto administration. In the codes department, the one item related to codes, you'll see in item B, is that there will be a hearing for 1863 Old Lancaster Fight on November 12th with the Berks County Wireless Property Committee. This is a hearing for the property owner to answer what they are going to do to rehabilitate property. Item number C, the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records has changed the application for a right to know request. And they've also changed some of the criteria having to do with that. For example, a right to know request must come on that form. The, so the administrative, administration of open records requests has changed on the state level. The township is required to change its policy to mirror that. And I am asking the Board of Commissioners to update that policy. The biggest change would be that the exhibit to the policy, which is the open records request form, would change. So I am requesting the Board adopt an updated policy.
Would it be worthwhile that possibly, that very shallow, we intend to what changed? I think when Gina and I spoke, just because it's something I directly advised public, the, you can speak to this more much better. I can, but effectively, there's a form you have to submit to get the open records request opened. The new change means, I'm just going to, it has to be a real person, effectively.
Yeah. I'm the open records officer for the township. And any municipality or state agency, you can go online at the Office of Open Records website, and there is a list of the designated open records officers for each of those entities. Now, of course, if I'm not available, that is my right-hand person for fulfilling open records requests. We get, we and all municipalities get a tremendous number of requests from bots, essentially, non-person entities that send out these requests automatically, and we are required to respond to them. The, a lot, the state law says that requests should be from a citizen of the United States and therefore not anonymous. What these entities do is they make up a name and they stick the name on the open records request, but they come out automatically. A considerable amount of staff time in all municipalities is spent responding to these. There are legitimate requests. Don't get me wrong. People make requests all the time that are responded to all the time, but a considerable chunk, about 35% of the responses are taken up by these eight entities, if you will, that are clearly using the data simply to make a profit for themselves. At any rate, the Office of Open Records conducted interviews with various open records officers throughout the Commonwealth. I was one of those, and I spoke to this issue. And one of the things that the Office of Open Records has done is to change the request form. Now, it used to be one page, now it's two pages. And on the second page, the entity or person must attest that they are an actual citizen of the United States, not necessarily Commonwealth, but of the United States. They have to do that. And the open records officer does not have to respond unless this form accompanies the request, this specific form. Obviously, we have a link to the current form on our website. If the Board adopts a new policy, we'll put the link to the other form. You can always get the form at the Office of Open Records website. And this is attempting to address the issue of anonymous requests and requests by non-human beings. So the, that is the gist of the, of the policy.
Stop that, but I would move to take off the state, is the states like? Also, I've been...
Mr. Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Baddoor?
Yes.
Ms. Ral? Yes. Thank you. Frankly, I don't know how some municipalities are able to respond to some of these. They tend to come in batches, and the city of Lethem, the city of Reading, I really don't know how they are able to keep up with open records. Because they've got to be substantial. And the next item is, I wanted to give the Board an update on the 2024 refuse fee. I'm sure that the Board recalls that this was an item of discussion at your, both of your July meetings. To recap a timeline, in January 2024, the 2024 refuse bills were mailed out. There were over 5,000 accounts. And the due date was March 33, 2024. That was for the flat amount of the refuse bill. The penalty period, 10% penalty, was collectible from April 1st through June 30th, 2024, and July 1st, 2024 was the date that accounts could go over to collections. When they were preparing the list to go over to collections, the staff noticed that there were a considerable number of accounts that had paid in 2023 but have not paid yet in 2024. So administratively, we decided to move the date for collections to August 1st and send an overdue notice to all of those accounts, which amounted to 836 overdue notice letters mailed out on July 11. Of that amount, 413 of those accounts were those who had paid in 2023 but have not yet paid in 2024. And it was several of those individuals who complained to the Board of Commissioners. On July 30th, 2024, the Board directed that the refund, that all those who were sent an overdue notice on July 11th should receive a refund of the late fee if they had paid it. And the township should accept the flat amount until closed business on September 30th, 2024. In regard to those 836 accounts that were involved with this transition, of the 413 accounts that were not in collections in 2023, but were sent a July 11th letter, only 43 of those accounts paid by September 30th. So now we are in October, and it is the township's intent for the remaining accounts that remain unpaid, 768 accounts, which includes both people already in collections and the people who did not pay by September 30th. We are going to be sending a letter notifying them that they will be sent to collections in 30 days, essentially another overdue notice, similar to the July 11th letter. And we intend on sending that out on Friday, unless the Board gives us different direction. And please notice, just like with the July 11th letter, they will still have an opportunity to pay before being sent to collections because it's required. That's why we send someone to collect it to give them a notice. So that will be what we do. Yeah, I'd say we're still overdue, from this point. All of those accounts have received 10 months of service without paying. The next item, item E, at the top of page three, is the distribution of state aid for pension. You heard Mrs. Carpenter remark that we had received state aid. For the Board's education, this is money from the foreign fire insurance tax. Foreign does not mean out of country. It means out of state. There is a tax for fire insurance emanating from out of state. The township has to certify by March 31st of every year how many pension plan participants there are and how many volunteer firefighters there are. Because fire relief money and pension state aid come out of the same pot of money. Obviously, there are many, many municipalities doing the same thing, certifying these lists of persons of these various groups. And the state has a very complex formula on how to divvy up that revenue, and that revenue comes in the form of what's called a unit value. Act 600 pension individuals are considered two units. Other pension individuals are considered one unit. And the amount that we received this year is $566,239.97. This, this will be, is proposed to be split up in $339,743.98 to the police pension fund in partial fulfillment of the 2024 MM minimum municipal obligation, and an amount of $226,495.99 to the non-uniform pension fund in partial fulfillment of the 2024 minimum municipal obligation. It requires a resolution to be adopted, which is the request of administration at this time.
I would be happy to make a motion, but I will have to abstain.
Then you can't make a motion.
I appreciate your statement.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Baddoor?
Yes.
Mr. Donnell, go stand. Ms. Ral? Yes. Thank you. The next item I have, the municipal authority, the sewer authority, met on October 3rd to discuss the 2025 budget and also discuss the recently imposed City of Reading rate increase of 12 and a half percent on treatment and transportation, and the various projects that the municipal authority has spearheaded over a number of years and currently in progress. I sent the Board of Commissioners via your tablets a memo pointing out that these projects, and Mr. McCoy here? Mr. McCoy had been the chair of the authority for a number of years during which we started down this program of reducing infiltration and inflow into the sewer system. And, yeah, on the, on the second page of my memo, there is an estimate of the savings that we achieved in Point of Connection 8. The reason that particular sewer point of connection is called out, one, it's one-third of our system, so we're 1,300 connections. Two, it was the subject of a consent order agreement with the Pennsylvania DPP to reduce INI in order to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows on the Angelic Interceptor, which combines flows from both Kilmeru and Kenthurst, paralleling the Angelic Creek and finally into the City of Reading treatment plant. Since we started, since those sewer main replacements have come online, so to speak, in the fourth quarter of 2021, there has been a noticeable reduction in the number of EDUs through Point of Connection 8, and my estimate of savings over the past 12 quarters has been $868,744.40. In other words, one-third of that project has now been paid for. Within 10 years, that project will have paid for itself simply from reducing the amount of INI coming through Point of Connection 8. We are currently engaged in the Cedar Top Road Sewer Main Replacement Project, which has a portion both in Point of Connection 8 and Point of Connection 1. Point of Connection 1 is our other biggest connection to the City of Reading. That is the Monfro's area, Henwin area, Godlerville area, it's a huge area. The portion that runs up against Green Township in the Greens Hill area, that's all in Connection 1. We, the municipal authority, looked at the flows this year, which were higher than expected, and of course, combined with the City of Reading treatment increase. and of course combined with the City of Redding treatment increase. And the municipal authority is recommending an increase to the sewer rate uh, from the current 125 dollars per quarter for a metered account, that means per quarter, to 145 dollars uh, per quarter for a metered account and 200 dollars per quarter for un-metered account. That's an account that's on standing there in sewer but has wells. Part of the reason for the increase is also to accumulate the necessary capital funds for continuing the strategic plan of uh, sewer main replacements and the Angelic Interceptor replacement that are already in design. The uh, in fact, for the Cedar Top Road Sewer Project, the sewer rate will, must be increased whether you take this particular recommendation of 145 or not. If you do not increase the sewer rate, you will have to take some of the money that has been earmarked for the Angelica project and paid for the Cedar Top project with us. The first quarter of 2024 was an extremely high-flow event. Um, and there's no, with rainwater, as Mr. Nick Nichols will be much more uh, articulate and explain, it's not just the amount of rainwater, it's where it falls, it's the rate it falls at. It's the length of time it falls. And the first quarter of 2021 was extremely expensive quarter. And the other two quarters that we recently paid the expense as well. So that's the summary. Um, the, the board, it would require it were, in order to change the rate. Uh, whether you take this recommendation or not, it would require authorization for.
Um, do you still recommend delaying the proposed sewer rates until the first quarter?
I don't necessarily recommend that. That can be done. But uh, the authority's recommendation is to get the ordinance adopted for the November City of Redding Treatment Payment. And that would mean that you would have to adopt it at your uh, October 29th meeting. Uh, you could adopt it at the November 19th meeting, but that's cutting it very, very far. Um, if you have a budget meeting on November 7th, that's also cutting it pretty fine. Uh, but not as bad as November 19th. My recommendation would be, if you don't wish to address this issue this meeting, that it be addressed at one of the budget meetings. Assuming we're having more than one, then that's another topic for later in this meeting. Um, and uh, authorize an ordinance at that time, less than four, in order to adopt ordinance on October 29th.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
Need to draft and advertise?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Batdor.
Yes.
Mr. Donnell.
Yes.
Ms. Rowell, yes. Thank you. So what would happen is um, we would, the solicitor would draft the ordinance. Um, she and I would, I think it would be better for your office to advertise. Yeah, we can, we can take our draft and advertise. I'll send it to you before we get out. And then it would be on the October 29th, the two things. Got everything out. Thank you.
Gee, this take place, uh, take effect rather in Q1?
No, November.
Oh, it'd be Q4. Okay.
The, the reason I specified is that the November payment is the aim for the third quarter of treatment. So it's, it's, Q4 calendar-wise, Q3 treatment-wise, because it's backward. Jean, anything else? Uh, as far as my portion of the meeting, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, then we can move on to public works with Mr. Nick Nichols, who is pointing more to me.
Yes, looking forward to it. Uh, last week we closed out a municipal auction for some surplus equipment we had. Um, the results were established here in the agenda. Uh, we were very happy with the, we moved out with the back truck. Um. We're very happy with a lot of the bridges we got here. So uh, it was, we had 93 bids back and forth with the backer and, and quite a number for the tanks and things. So uh, we need a motion from the board to accept these bids.
I'll make a motion to consider the bids.
I'll second.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Batdor.
Yes.
Mr. Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yeah.
Ms. Rowell, yes.
And just for replace keeper, we, we paid close to 337,000 dollars for the backer in 2012. Uh, so it held its value well. Uh, it's good key things when you're covering a nice July. Thank you. Uh, moving on, sanitary sewer replacement project on Cedar Top Road is moving on. Um, we should be done with the paperwork in the next few days. And with that said, we have an application for payment number two. Name on it 266,850 dollars and zero cents.
I'll make a motion to make the payment for 266,850.
I'll second.
Mr. Batdor.
Yes.
Mr. Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Rowell, yes. And selling the backdrop doesn't mean that, I mean.
I can see the awareness increase stabilization project, uh, we're going to have bids on October 4th. Uh, you get a letter of tablets from Atlas recommending the award. Um, and the low good J-Tops excavating and hauling in the amount of 120,349 dollars in general sense.
If I could suggest, awarding the low good subject to the solicitor's satisfaction of the paperwork, there are some details that the solicitor would like ironed out in, in some of their.
I don't mean the flow-by-flow of that, but what, what kind of detail are we talking about?
It, it wasn't anything major. It was uh, more or less the way that they characterize themselves um, with respect to what kind of entity they are. I, I just wanted to make sure that everything was very clear and accurate. So there's a couple of things that were going to happen to recently. It, it's, it has nothing to do with um, the pricing or the service that they're offering.
And I take it as not, that's Mr. Bow.
I will to contingently accept the bid on the Kelsey's Delta. Uh, I say the motion.
Mr. Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Batdor.
Yes.
Ms. Rowell, yes. And, and certainly if things aren't right, we'll be back at this on October 29th. We're still within a 60-day window of reporting.
Other than that, the collection started today. We'll continue running township for the next nine weeks. Uh, we will fall behind at some point when the leaves really come down like crazy. Um, and then we will catch up like we do every year. Uh, so please be patient with us. Probably have two food out today. You got to go. It's just the beginning. So that's all I have tonight. My sharing question.
I think that's it. Thank you. Uh, next up is the engineer, Mr. Wrenbisky.
Uh, just an update on our Freemansville Road signage. Uh, as you recall, Pendott Smith submitted a letter to the township August 14th in response to our request to have the department perform a speed limit study as well as a traffic engineering study for the restriction of trucks. Pendott uh, declined changing the speed limit. It's currently posted at 35 miles per hour. However, they did uh, would, would be receptive to conducting the truck study. However, they requested that the township update the speed limit signs as were required um, under the law for 35 mile per hour and less posting. Public Works Department did complete the signs and inquiries with the Pendott uh, layout and plan. Um, I did contact the traffic department at Pendott, informing them the same and requesting them to proceed with the truck study for Freemansville Road. So hopefully we'll have something by, at least by the next few, at that. Next item is just an update on the Mount Penn uh, traffic study. Uh, we completed our traffic study for re-restriction of truck traffic along Mount Penn Road. Essentially, our study took into consideration several variables. We, we evaluated site distance along the road, vertical intersection site distance. We evaluated the crash data that was provided by the township police department. We also looked at the geometric review of the roadway, uh, generated plans based on lidar mapping and utilized software that evaluates different types of trucks uh, along the road making turning movements and areas where you consider a critical horizontal alignment. We also looked at uh, different other pavement and so forth. Essentially, our study uh, came to conclusion that we're, it's our professional opinion to restrict trucks over 10,000 uh, gross weight, which is essentially five tons. Anything less than 10,000 pounds would be permitted on Mount Penn Road. Anything exceeding uh, 10,000, we consider that to be is the uh, gross volume weight restriction, GBWR. Uh, anything but, anything over that would be uh, prohibited. However, please note that the vehicle code does provide exemptions to these restrictions, including school buses, emergency vehicles, construction and maintenance vehicles for government utilities, contractors. Also, local deliveries are permitted and are defined as deliveries going to, from a resident commercial establishment or farm. Uh, for example, trash haulers, uh, fuel deliveries, moving trucks, uh, package deliveries that completely reach uh, by Mount Penn Road are exempt from restriction of trucks. So if, if the board commissioners are in favor, then we would recommend that a ordinance be adopted for restricting truck traffic for uh, vehicles over 10,000 uh, gross volume.
Kind of a goofy question, but if you factor in all the exemptions and the fact that we're ongoing for stuff that's over 10,000, what, what are we actually talking about that's being restricted?
Essentially, pickup trucks, uh, is only five tons. So essentially, you're not even being allowing box trucks. We looked at a box truck. We also looked at semi, uh, tractor trailer. So essentially, you're allowing any type of pickup truck, uh, any, I would say, very small uh, utility-type truck, anything such as a box truck or similar to a purse or a penskey, they would not be permissible. So five tons is really not a, a whole lot of weight. Most trucks are less than that if, um, if that's how it's popular around. They're four tons. So you're really, really limiting the number of uh, trucks that can use that road, those in size.
Thank you.
Again, just to clarify my understanding, the leaves, you know, we're limiting through traffic, obviously, vehicles, right? So we're, we're just talking about 18-wheelers driving through Mount Penn Road, the poorly.
Yes.
Heavy vehicles that are only carrying some sort of freight, driving them up.
Yeah, that is correct. What, what we're trying to do is restrict trucks that are used in Mount Penn Road through either the aid of their GPS system or shortcuts. Uh, that's what we're trying to prevent. Only allowing local deliveries and small, I'll say, larger-sized pickup trucks, but that are, that are five tons or less allowed to use Mount Penn Road, which really would limit to any, any type of small vehicle, uh, landscaper, for instance, that might have a trailer and so forth. And combinations between both the trailer and, and the truck itself, so that cannot exceed, or, or cannot exceed uh, five tons.
I would move to not fail on this. One second.
There would be a motion to draft the ordinance or advertise. And, no, he didn't actually draft the ordinance.
No, no, I have, I have a draft to the ordinance. Our recommendation would be for the board to consider adopting an ordinance for that, for those gross volume weight restrictions.
One quick question, with respect to the speed limits that are being changed on Freemansville, do we need to amend the ordinance? That also changes that, or?
Actually, Pendott uh, will not be changing the speed. So the city's speed limit is posted at 35 mile per hour, three control roads. That will remain, Pendott has determined that the speed limit cannot be lowered. However, if they determine that there is a truck restriction, adopt the ordinance uh, for the police department.
So, yeah, but another question on the motion is, with, with this motion, should we hold the solicitor's word in advance until we hear from Pendott about Freemansville Road?
We can. I, I think if, to, I would say minimize costs, it would be a good opportunity if Pendott does come back with restriction, that we could adopt the ordinance or perhaps let's prepare the ordinance at the same time for adoption. That would improve both three control roads.
So, uh, I'll take the vote now. Mr. Bill Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Batdor.
Yes.
Mr. Donnell.
We're voting to, we contingent upon.
Well, to draft and, authorizing the solicitor to draft and advertise ordinance for truck restriction on Mount Penn Road. But we're letting the solicitor know, so hold the fire until we hear about Freemansville.
Yes.
And uh, just to let the board uh, know, you may recall that earlier this year, you also authorized a stop sign on Jefferson. And that ordinance has not been adopted. We would combine it in the same. Usually, traffic-related stuff, it has historically been that we've accumulated towards here this year, any traffic-related needs or ordinance, and doing it all in one ordinance at one time. So we would lower that on. Thank you. Yes. Oh, I thought I had it, I'm so sorry.
Oh, yeah, moving on to Kelsey's, Soul's.
All right, um, item A under Solicitor is just an update on the zoning board of the text amendment. Um, A1 indicates that there were letters sent to each of the property owners in the mixed speech general commercial district, and they were sent on um, October 7th of 2024. The reason that letters were sent to those property owners specifically was because of the text amendment related to the, the changes in permitted uses within the MUDC district. Um, because we removed certain uses and the township wanted to remove certain uses, we wanted to make sure that we were covering any potential argument that it could be considered an actual map change, the voting map amendment, the, the text amendment. Um, so we just covered our bases by ensuring that we sent direct notice to those property owners. Um, items, item A2, there was um, an advertisement drafted for the public hearing that is set to take place on November 19th. And that advertisement is scheduled for publication in the Redding Eagle on November 3rd and November 10th of 2024. There was a draft copy of the text amendment delivered to the Kinga Planning Commission on October 7th, 2024. There was a copy of the text amendment also delivered to the Burks County Planning Commission on September 26th, 2024. And the um, text amendment draft was also delivered to the Burks County Law Library on September 26th, 2024. And that's all required by statute to have been done. So that has been complied with. Um, and we also, if you remember, the township authorized a text amendment to be drafted to the subdivision and land development ordinance. And again, following the same um, the same requirements, you'll see E1 through 4, all of the same notices and advertisements um, will go out and will be by it. Unless there's any questions on that, that's sort of just an FYI. I can move on to um, item C. Item C, um, 711 and 713 Philadelphia Avenue. The board authorized uh, me at the last hearing to actually file for um, injunction relief in order to have those last two uh, structures demolished. And we did have a court hearing last week, um which Jean, Patty, Willie and um the designated township structural engineer for that particular matter attended. And we were successful. We did receive um an order signed by the court allowing the township to um demolish both of those structures um to create a lien on the property to collect the ten percent penalty. Um and we can do it on an emergency basis without having to obtain things. So at this point, um the board could go one of two ways. I was in contact with the one per one entity owns those properties. So I was in contact with the principals of that entity. Um and they understood that this was gonna happen. They really didn't put up a fight. Um so we can either move forward with following a court order and and having, you know, a company that you choose or that the administration finds is a good price to demo both properties, both structures, or I can reach out to the owner and give them a certain amount of time to find a contractor in case of the demo themselves.
I think we should move forward and go on.
Yeah, I I do agree on it. There's one quick just question. Um moving forward, the township, this is a silly question. Now, if they'll need recourse to recover the funds for the expense is by we know that we've got.
Correct. We would we would leave a property with a ten percent penalty. Um and then when and if the property is sold, we would be able to recoup those funds, which is part of the reason that I gave the option of trying to reach out to the the owner and giving them a certain amount of time to pay for it themselves, so that the township don't have to incur that cost upfront and wait X number of years to potentially get that.
I'm open to giving them almost a chance to take care of themselves and avoid the need with the board is that. I think this is the
And I don't and I only give that option because they have been in touch with me. It's not like they've been ignoring me. I have had conversations with them before the hearing. Um so I just thought maybe so that the township could take some money. It might be an option and give them a very limited amount of time to pull this down later. We see if they actually move on it.
Yes.
This was odd to me. It's like, why haven't they acted? I mean, that's been there for months.
It's been there longer than.
Years.
Uh because there was no incentive. Maybe now, now they're under the order of saying, either you're gonna do it or we're gonna do it.
I just think we should move forward, leave the properties and demolish it. That's a motion.
What kind of window would you recommend giving them if they were to do it? I mean, it's gotta be tight, right?
Yeah, I would give them that more than thirty days.
I think it's worth forty days wait after a year and a half to see if we save some money.
Uh there's a motion on the table, so I don't know. I don't know. I didn't. I don't know if there's a second.
I'm licensed, I mean.
I'll I'll take a look.
Yeah, I I kind of like to. I I I see both ways. I'd like to just put an end with it then because this has been going on so long. But at the same time, you know, I, you know, feel like they should get thirty days.
You want me to take a vote on the motion if this package would fail? Um this is very Miller. So the most, just to be clear, the motion is to demolish it now.
The motion is, sorry.
Yeah, it's a.
Okay. All right, um no.
Yeah, Mr. Badger.
I agree with Bill.
Before I vote, I want I want to say it. Should this not pass? I will, I will, my answer is I'll I will immediately raise contingent motion that if upon thirty days of of compliance, we move forward without even bringing this to the next meeting. So I I vote now, yeah, automatically. So I vote no, that we just move forward preemptively and I think we should give the opportunity.
Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Boy, I agree with what you said.
Yeah, so I'm agreeing.
Okay, then I'll tell them.
So I would just give thirty days notice to the principals of the property if we don't hear. Uh or I I can we just say we defer to Kelsey's judgment on on whether or not they're.
I would say this the motion would be um providing the property owner with a thirty day notice to demolish the structure, and if they don't demolish it within the thirty days, then the township can.
So.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Denal?
Yes.
Mr. Phil Miller?
No.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Maybe else Kelsey? Sorry, unless there's any questions, that is all. Thank you. Okay, in the bills, do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion to pay the bills for a second.
Mr. Denal?
Yes.
Mr. Phil Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Correspondence succession extension of time to December thirty first, twenty four, received for Greensville business park, dated ten eight twenty four. Uh for the commissioners, uh we have an executive session, but we must switch it up and do public comment before the executive session. Um so I I'm here going with you. I'm very Christine Van, you know, Miss.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christine Bonfido, and I am a a Coomer Township president as well as um a trustee for the Melvin Community Library. Uh we want to thank everyone for your online support of our of the library. And um we're grateful for the honor, for the support and the money, as well as the record, um as well as uh person representatives on the board. Uh we'd like to extend you and continue to expand and refine our services and offerings to meet the changing needs and demographics of our communities. The library has offered diverse programs, which is met the needs of our community. We continue to maintain Gold Star status in twenty twenty four, providing quality programs and resources resources to the uh to our patrons and users. We offer weekly story times, sensory inclusive story times, bilingual story times, summer concert series, Dungeons and Dragons, and uh also story times at Melvin Forest. We uh as a board continue to raise funds and through our annual FPL campaign. We're getting ready to mail out letters in October, in late October. Last year, we raised over twenty thousand dollars for the library with our annual appeal. And we're working to partner with local businesses as well as our sponsors, uh well, with with our sponsors program. Uh we held over ten VGO fundraisers uh run by the board and volunteers. We manage our limited funds well, uh maintaining our service service hours in spite of financial difficulties in the current climate. We have over sixty volunteers to help defray costs. We um are actively seeking additional funding sources through local state grants, partnerships, businesses, uh memorials. Um and um in twenty twenty four, the library received a ten thousand dollar grant from the Hiller Foundation Foundation to help um with collection expenditures. And uh our wonderful friends group uh uh provided us funds for new chairs in our programming rooms. So I'm
Hi, I'm Allison Koppa. I'm a longtime resident of the Coomer Group. And I'm also um the uh trustee on the library, of the Melvin Community Library. Uh part of us, the library is truly an asset to this community. We are fortunate to have such a wonderful library. The library currently has one thousand nine hundred sixty one active cardholders um and which we thank you for funding. Um we are asking the board to we would really like you to slightly increase our funding in twenty twenty five to forty one thousand, but we would really grateful if you can keep us at minimum funding. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question for you. I for wanting to go my hearing system. You have this fantastic, and we all do an amazing job. I have a question for the members that we've been those of us up here, but is this something we would open during the budgetary process or is this?
Yeah.
Yeah. We got my, we got my.
Thank you. I'm having trouble reading some markings on here, so I'm not I'm not sure which are yeses, but is that a question mark? Is that a Patrick was reviewing. Patrick Marks. I can't.
Uh, no.
Uh and another question mark was Susan McCoy. Okay, going right on down here. Natasha Donalds. And I think that is it. Did anybody else put yes on here?
I didn't, but I do have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Is that possible?
Definitely have to come up here and say your name and address.
Hi, my name's Pat Popps. I live at Valley Street Road, four hundred and ninety street road. Uh during your discussion, this is basically about the map pen and this is the other one. The Freemanville Road, Freemanville Road. Our, I live on Downstream. There is a sign that says trucks cannot exceed twenty six thousand pounds. We have everything go down that road. I mean, we have big dump trucks pulling big trailers with big equipment. Is there any way, I don't know what's involved, and if it's possible, to get that amount of gross vehicle amount lowered to prohibit like the guy delivering beer to the Louis to not use that road? A lot of this all came about. We've had very little traffic for that road for years, except for basic local deliveries, right? Then when we had the construction, everybody went on waves or Google Maps and everybody, oh, look, we can do this. Now it's a raceway. The other comment, you're not gonna like this, but I mean, all this stuff with Penn Dot saying we have to have signage, we have to do this, we have all these rules and regulations. Who's gonna enforce thirty five miles an hour? Because our road is thirty five miles an hour. And we don't have a, we don't have a gun to say you're doing, you know, sixty two. So it's, I I get a lot of back and forth in my head in terms of we're spending a lot of time, a lot of township money, drafting all these uh, you know, four entrances. And are we gonna be able to enforce it? But if you have a tractor trailer go down there, do you give them a warning? Hey buddy, you can't do this or you get fined. You know, the guys that are, I had, this happened two, about two weeks ago. I was going about thirty five. There was two cars behind me. The third car passed both of us, both of us on a curve. Doing, I don't know how fast, but I mean, the blue eye. The great part is that we were both at the same stop sign at the end of the road, all lined up. And it's like, yeah, I really got you a lot away, you know? But there's, I don't know, it's very, very frustrating. And I know this takes a lot of time and money to do all this work, so I don't know, is what do you have to do or do I have to submit paperwork saying, can we reduce the uh gross weight or how can we enforce? Maybe get the chief here a speed gun.
I have a couple of que- couple of questions, comments and questions. One is first from the segment chief, I guess, um in terms of in terms of enforcement, it's sort of the same thing we've talked about several times, right? We we can place a cop car there that's possible, you know, allocate resources.
This is your segue for local user radar.
He tells, I mean, it's, we type conversations, right? He'd come here every month. He comes up to me and talks to me all the time. And it's the same thing I told the board when we discussed items like Mount Pen, Freemanville Road, is that you can put all kinds of regulations in place. And AGDC could do all these studies. Um and they'll do them, which, to answer your question, what does it take? It takes order approval to pay GDC money, right, do another studies, I guarantee you. We lower a change and we have to do a travel study. So the exact same thing will occur for Valley Street Road that just occurred for Mount Pen Road, which is AGDC money to redo a travel study. And and furthermore, yeah, we, you can put a stop sign at every intersection through ordinance, but you're exactly right, the cop has to be there to see it. And like I just told you, every time this has come up, these are very difficult to enforce because it it's the same as the speed limit. I mean, let's face, you're you're basically going on the honor system for speed unless a cop's there. I'd love to have radar, the local law enforcement, by whatever state we, we're the only state that does not authorize municipal police departments to utilize radar.
I wanna, I wanna repeat that this comes up at almost every legislative training session that we have. Local police use of radar is not allowed intentionally.
So the que- question, I guess.
Yeah, call your.
Is it possible then, without the use of radar to enforce speeding at by municipal police thing at all?
We do have tools at our disposal. Uh for the most part, what we utilize is the painted lines of the street. We use a stopwatch. We have a mechanism in our vehicles that we're able to calculate speed. The problem is, is that on roads like Valley Street, Mount Pen, Freemanville, ninety percent of the roads in Coomer Township, we need a line of sight that will enable us to do that. And we don't have that.
So I have a, just a crazy idea severely. If a resident were to put up a trail cam that were motion activated and showed a measurable rate of speed.
I can probably stop you there and say it's not gonna be worth.
Yeah, I mean, but yeah, I mean, I think outside the box here, because like, like even if a resident had video evidence, like and like took it to the court, like there's nothing.
Well, there's nothing that would enable them to calculate the speed. Um as far as enforcement of, say, weight, um that again would be impossible to qualify in court because you have to have some, so for example, we get called out for um a truck that's over what they believe to be over twenty six thousand pounds or five thousand pounds on the road. Two things have to occur. One, we have to be there to see it. Most times, obviously, as you know, they're going by time, we get up there. Um the second thing would be, we have to prove that that vehicle is, one, not a local delivery um or does not need any of the exemptions. And two, we have to prove that that vehicle is over the most of weight that's prohibited to be on that road. So all those things are accomplishable. Um although they will require some time and energy with, say, for example, the the weight trap, the the weight of the truck. Um so it's very difficult. It's it's challenging. We ask. Like you you indicated, it's very frustrating. It's frustrating for the places and for the residents. Um I will say that, you know, the example of the beer dish, the the beer truck, we can't stop that. That's a local rip. And even say, even if, even if, yes, even if it's over, even with them, you you know, as the police officers, we say, hey, you had an alternate route, you could have done this. And that's still not something that we can force forward to. Um so it's it's challenging. It's difficult. I think the best thing that we can try to do is to continue to fight. is to continue to fight, um, and, and have our legislators allow us to utilize radar. The fear with radar in Pennsylvania among the residents, some residents, is that they will, uh, that police department will use that. So they put measures in place that will prevent, uh, departments from probably from use of radar. Uh, I still think it's a great idea, even the way it's written, uh, to allow us, one of the, the, the regulations was, I believe, Jean Kirk, if I'm wrong, uh, the regulation was that the police department could not make when I say make, the, the, the money that comes from issuing a travel ticket, which is pennies on the ballot. Um, couldn't be more than thirty-five percent or forty percent of the overall budget.
Yeah, trying to, yeah, trying to prevent speed traps using radar.
Right, and so.
There's a great there's a great fear apparently among state legislators that Madison and company are going to sit at a particular and hit everybody who goes front and I'm telling you what, you guys got a lot of better things to do, right?
And not only that, it's, it's a losing proposition on our um, because if a citation is issued and the individual takes it to court, I have to pay an officer overtime to go testify at that here. So that ticket, whatever the amount is, um, we lose money. If, if so, we do not conduct speed enforcement to make any money. Nothing we do in police departments is about making money. We're, again, a losing proposition. It's, we, if we're a business, we'd be a failing business because we're not in, what we are in is to reduce speed and, and hold people accountable for the regulations and laws that are placed. Um, so it's, it's my, my best suggestion would be to please advocate, right, senators, your representatives, to allow local municipal police departments to have this tool of enforcement. Um, because our traffic enforcement is based on complaints from the township. That's, that's what we do, so. Like Jean said, we don't allow the sick and disallowed speed, right? Strategically, we have to put different officers in places to prevent crime and also to uh, address complaints that come in for speeding. And it, it's no secret anymore. With any speed timing device that police utilizes, there's regulations in place that prevent us from issuing citations for individuals that may be going one, two, three, up to ten miles an hour over speed. You know, I say that, it, it's not a secret, I don't own those. Stay on, stay ten miles an hour under the, above the posted speed limit, you're good. You know, and that's a shame that I even have to say that.
I know, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, here we are spending money to do studies, they're making signs, they just go this much, can't go over this much, but basically we can monitor it and we can find.
Yeah, we, like you said, we can, we can do our best to have, to have officers out there when, when the residents call. And one thing that the, the, the boards in the past and this point continues to do is, uh, commit to a level service. Every time a resident calls police department, we send somebody out. People see the police house. There's departments that understand, understanding that can't do that because um, their boards just can't do it. So the board supports police department when, when, when someone calls, we're gonna do it. So yeah, we, we encourage your call, we can still try. Um, and I'll say, it's not just the police. So Bob's people, for example, were out uh, putting these signs that had not required to be up on Freemanville Road. And his personnel were verbally accosted in the running by individuals who were watching him, man, his people put these signs, which then caused him to call us. So now we have, it looks like a Pendar, and four biz workers and two high officers out there standing around just making sure nobody.
There were six contract employees out there putting up, well, basically put two bolts in one sign because one property owner had was either interrational about where we put the sign. We were putting up a sign where PennDOT directed us to, or they wouldn't do the study. Um, we can debate where the sign is, but it didn't mean you had to do, and I had to call these guys to watch your back because you don't know what you were doing these days.
Ultimately, really, a lot of it is safety. I mean, just getting my mouth in the interest, so thank you, I appreciate it.
I have one further comment. So I mentioned the first part of this question that I assume you anticipated we were gonna say about the board effectively being impossible. The other phrase that comes to mind to me is how prevention is pound cure. It's better than pound of cure, right? I think prevention is hard, but the one thing that, that popped in in my head is we get off of four twenty-two going into West Reading, there's a sign there that tells you the speed you're going. And that, and, and obviously I don't have the study, the data to say that is very effective or it's not. Personally, for me, it's very effective. I see, oh, I'm going ten miles an hour over speed, then I need to slow down. So and it totally, I see it affect, have an effect. Do you have any information on, on effectiveness or?
Yes, so we have those, essentially they're speed hints, they're speed signs. We have those in township. I would love for the board to optimize me to buy another one. Because they're worth their way to go in that when we get complaints, um, we deploy those signs. We can have them to both. One's the visible mode, it would basically, um, essentially do what you just indicated. Not shame, but shock that they know, oh my gosh, the road's fast, and they slow down. The other method mode is stealth mode, which does not display the sign or the number, how speed, your speed. Um, but it collects all that data, um, and it helps us identify exactly if there's a problem, when the problem is. Uh, and essentially, uh, also provides service to GDC for all the, you know, the, um, yeah, accounts, the, the vehicular traffic.
Just because that's speed board isn't lit, doesn't mean it's not working. A lot of people think, oh, they put the battery good there or something. That's not the case. It's it's taken account. I think you're going to see the numbers when you're always flashing. We want to know how factually it is.
Motors will tend to slow down because they know it's either a speed trap or it's taking that of, I call the black box, then you get another municipality, it's a great tool, and then you download the information. It would be set about speed, which is one of the criteria that PennDOT looks at for posting speed limit. And it's either five mile per hour plus or minus safe for bend. And there's other factors involved, even the three seconds and typically it's five, but it is a very useful tool. That gives you a very accurate representation of what most motorists need to sound.
We, we do, a lot of them will move to a road project, you'll ask that we put up the, the black box and and get a traffic counter. It was interesting, I'm not sure. It almost said whether or not we were putting lines back, building signs, you know, hopefully back to good.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, you also assisted, uh, a number of times in prioritizing road repair, right? Absolutely. So, um, the, the speed board, we do have two that are smaller that we utilize. Um, the, the reoccurring cost with those is the software subscription, the cloud-based, you know. But that's, again, invaluable because it provides us with that data. Oftentimes, what it does show is that, um, it's very difficult to gauge a speed while you're standing still. So people will come in and complain about speeding on the roadways. I'm not saying that I don't believe them because I, I do believe this. Everyone's speeding, unfortunately. Um, but it's usually not as fair. But it provides us with accurate data on locations and times, sorry, times, um, where we can uh, focus in on enforcement. Uh, we do have a newer model speed board, and then we do a speed sign. But I do think it is gonna be time to revisit, uh, and hopefully bring to the board, um, uh, a request to get another speeds, uh, speed boards. Again, I just.
So that, is that something I, I think I've asked especially several times, is that something we'll break into the budgetary process then?
If you would like me to bring that down, I was.
I think that's like the prime example of money well spent. It's, it's you just said many, many times, it's invaluable. It allows us to efficiently, I think, we just spent the first fifteen minutes of this conversation talking about how hard enforcement is. This is a solution that helps make enforcement easier. Helps us more effectively allocate the resources that we have. So I, I think I would say please.
I absolutely will. And just to put another plug into the department, um, and again to the board that that the board has made in, in his, what's it made of? Uh, for a level service that will enable us to do that. And I can't, I can't say this enough, there's departments in, in the county that um, have to prioritize what calls they go to, uh, because of staffing and maybe she can't do it. We have the, um, luxury and the, I'm just so grateful and thankful that we don't have to do that. So when someone calls us, regardless of what the issue is, they're gonna see a cop, they're gonna, they're gonna talk with an officer. Um, and we're gonna take a report, we're gonna take our time to see what we can do to help. So whatever will be called, that's helpful.
The radar bill has been in the house for five years, after passing. Contact your legislature.
He's still having a comment? Well, I'm just wondering the effectiveness of cameras as, uh, jointed is put up all over the borough. Would that be, uh, an effective return on speeding for the township here?
Are you talking about cameras on the traffic lights?
Yeah. They're not cameras. They, they're, they're not variable cameras. They're actually, they're video detection. They replace what they call loop sensors.
And what it does is it actually videotapes vehicles and adjusts timing based on volume. So before we had a loop sensor, so when every time a car would go over a loop sensor, it would add time, it would green time, and then it added any additional three seconds to every vehicle until it maxed out. What these cameras will do is now, it does two things, same thing that we were talking about, speed, it actually do data. Uh, PennDOT will look at the data in case you have to speed, uh, timing change, but it also will, will serve the same purpose as a loop sensor by videotape the cameras, they get into visual, and then it'll adjust like the side street approach, you might have, uh, all green Malankaster Avenue, but when a car comes to the minor side street approach, that camera will pick up the vehicle, it'll detect it, and then it'll, 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 you know, trigger it or it'll allow it to go as minimum passage time, or it'll add or so forth. So it acts a nice tool because in winter months, these cameras will still work, whereas the sensitivity of a loop sensor during certain weather conditions. And just from deterioration of paving, because slippage, cracks, cars coming, and trucks, and those loop sensors need to be replaced. There are probably a couple of grants. You might be spending ten thousand on a camera, but in the long run, you're gonna be saving a lot of money by not having to have those loop sensors replaced. Or when we do a paving project, we can just fill out the road and not have to worry about the.
Yes, we have to replace those loop sensors a couple of times a year. They're about three grand apiece. Um, and, and there's, there could be, at the smallest intersection, yeah, three or four.
You, you have it as, a bunch, you just have each approach, and then you might have what they call call loops. I call a call loop, that they change them. But what those do is, is if you have a car trailing, it'll, it hits that loop, it'll, it'll allow that car to get through as long as it's not exceeding its maximum allowed green time. Um, and, and like Bob said, all those, all those lines, they have to be recut in and then jump your box, it's a lot of wiring, and those cameras, they may be expensive, first by the wall, I'm gonna say a lot.
And it's, it's for a sheet, I think there's sixteen loops to control that, instead of, there, there's one in each lane, there's one for the back, there's turning ones, there, there's a whole bunch there. I just happened to notice that stop by this and.
Yes, ac- actually PennDOT, uh, got a grant, it was through Shillington, but it actually affects two of our segments, we share one with, uh, Shillington and, and it's a, they call it closed loops. So it, it, it works to allow traffic to, I'll say, efficiently flow through. I mean, once you get saturated rates, tougher vehicles to get through, but it works very well because a lot of, a lot of the software and the controllers are obsolete. So we had to replace the controllers to get the software or new hardware, I should say, and then with the cameras, it really helps, helps well, um, and, and it gives simple time adjustments, so hopefully it's worked much better than it has.
And what, with that, we have an executive session.
Okay, for the minutes, um, we just held an executive discussion to discuss a collective bargaining issue, um, some personnel issue, and one real estate issue. Um, the only action that will be, uh, taken is I'm looking for a motion to advertise and ordinate and mend the Teamsters' pension.
So, I said.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Denell. Ms. Row.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, who wants to be the guest?
Uh, yeah, if you remember at the last board meeting, um, the board authorized me to go back to Delta Development Group in order to see if we could renegotiate a section of the contract that they had proposed, which would be to remove section four B of the contract. And that section dealt with, um, kind of reasonable costs that would be paid by the township on top of the seven thousand dollar a month container. Um, and Mr. Bill Miller's concern was, well, what are those costs? Where can they be found? Um, how do we know upfront what they are? So I went back to Delta and basically just said, we don't want any costs at all um, to leave four B in its entirety, and they agreed. So they did send, um, a new contract back to me that they had already executed. Again, the start date of the contract would not be until January first of twenty twenty-five. Um, but they did send it back executed with the removal of that language, as well as all the other previous changes that I have requested and we had authorized. So at this point, it would be, like the board wants to make a motion to, um, consider entering into that contract.
I would move to enter into the contract as negotiated also.
Mr. Barry Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Badger.
No.
Mr. Denell.
Yes.
Mr. Phil Miller.
No.
Ms. Row.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, yeah, Greg has a budget process presentation.
Mark there. I'm sorry.
Would you like to convene your appointments? So, um okay, so we're, we're here to consider candidates for the zoning hearing board and the plan. The zoning hearing board's one, the two involvement members for plan. And uh yeah, so we don't know who is for it. Maybe just sort of rely there and do those.
It might be a lot of big deals where you, uh if we don't think it's too long, we can pick them for the other. Tom is Walt's label, who's for an author for the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, Clancy Arrow's. Oh, they, it, it, we must say, the individuals that have stepped forward for to be considered for appointments as priors or alternate or a bank issue. Are any of these people intended?
Yeah, Patrick is here.
Is introduce you to the board.
Yeah, sure. Uh Patrick Mars, uh he's been forty-five years working for utility industry. Much good here. Uh thought they team went to college. Um back now, last ten years or so. Would you talk for a project in Rockland Power Plant uh in the forty-eight, total forty-eight states, up to forty-five dollar budgets. Mechanic like you here, um I have a wide range of uh expertise as far as uh working with zoning. New plants, uh highway construction, so all local governments. Might get involved now that I'm finally home.
Would you be involved if you wanted zoning or the sound? Does anyone know if any of the other three or four kind of mix up? Nobody, part of the other three people here is Thomas, he's someone's.
I mean, uh to be quite honest, he's evidently qualified. Um would you be open to being appointed as an alternate? I would move that you're appointed as an alternate.
I think normally you know, I wonder that. The other, yeah, we're gonna have to choose.
Well, since he's the one here, it must have zoning hearing board, should we go for the zoning hearing board for better? Alright, so. So I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint um Patrick Mars to the zoning hearing board as an alternate second. Could you hold the vote, Patty, or?
Alright, um Greg Miller. Dean Thaddeus.
Yes.
Mister William. Lisa Rapp. Okay, there's still two um of those other people. Did we wanna put um anyone on the alternate for the planning commission?
Well, we had also like that. Two for plan, well, we have two guys, whether that's.
But I think today's point, somebody's leaving, so there'll be another spot open in January. Okay, so we could potentially appoint all three of them then and put somebody uh on the, on hold.
I would wait till uh, I would wait till they submit their, until Bill needs to submit his resignation, you accept that.
He submitted it, you have, you can put the exact name on, on the line.
I tried to look at the people who submitted their names on LinkedIn, and I was unable to look at their profiles. So I do not wanna make a vote on someone I don't know what qualifications are, and they're not even here in the audience.
Um but I, I can tell you from looking, um one of them is the owner of the lumberyard down close to uh the pizza place on Route ten there. Yes, that's, that's my association. Uh long, long background, and then Tom is a engineer.
Um I think Tom is very professional, says his resume, and engineering is a good background uh for planning. Um I would move to appoint Tom and a little bit of that at the other candidates. But uh would to uh appoint uh Tom, Thomas, Walt's label as an alternate.
Mister Bill Miller. Mister Greg Miller. Mister Badger. Mister Denell. Ms. Row.
Um for Mister Earl, I'll do the same. I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Clancy her as an alternate to the planning commission.
Mister Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mister Badger. Mister Denell. Mister Phil Miller. Ms. Row.
Is there anything we can do with Keith now, or do we need to wait until we officially get that resignation?
I think I'd wait till you accept the resignation and then you can kind of put both things on the agenda at the same time for.
Jean, how many alternates do we have for the guests, the planning commission?
With these two, you've now filled those spots uh for the moment until um Mister Meek is no longer on the planning commission in January. And then you can decide if you want one of the alternates fill that spot, or if you want to appoint directly to that spot. Um there typically, typically, an alternate would move into the open spot, but that, there's no law, as last the floor said, there is one, there is not, now you could do that.
Right, well, were you asking those, you, how many spots open are there or?
How many alternates we have for the planning commission?
There are three spots and you just filled the rest of them, so.
I'll be there right now, and so Mister Meek's reservation is accepted.
First, so will they, what, both of those items in on the twenty-ninth, is that what I heard?
We can certainly put his, with acceptance of his resignation effective January one on your meeting the twenty-nine. I would follow the recommendation of the sources that are about, uh the part of the, the other nomination for Mister Willis Galski.
Right, how will these, how will they?
Well, I mean, I, I think one of the first things is to figure out if any of the alternates wants to move into a position of a regular board member. And if they do, you can consider either moving that person onto the planning commission as a regular member or appointing somebody else who is completely left to you, who you want to sit in that.
So since we have someone here in the room who seems eager to be involved. Mister Mars, you seem, again, quite qualified. Is a regular position on the planning mission something you'd be interested in?
You are, you play the position very far.
I, I know, in, in lieu of an alternate on the zone.
Just made a motion to put on the zoning hearing board, and now you wanna put on the planning commission, you can make up your mind.
I'm asking him what he wants, Phil.
If you made a motion, I'm going on the zoning hearing board.
We'll just leave it here for now, and then, then we can talk about it in uh the end of the month. Is that alright?
Mister Miller, I apologize, we're not having ready access to that, so it's queued up now, which we do like someone to ban the uh.
So it works too. So this, this will be quick here. So all I'm gonna do is kind of give a little bit of background on the budget process as it exists today and what I'm proposing. So as it exists today, the, the way it kind of works is the, the department, each one of the individual departments go out, they create their budgets, submit their budgets in, everybody reviews their budgets. Um uh it gets consolidated, the board comes in, there's several meetings, three of them will be exact, where everything is kind of hashed out, where everything's reviewed. Do we wanna do this? Do we wanna increase this? We're gonna decrease that, if this makes sense. Yada, 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 make long story short. And then finally, at the end of all that discussion, you kind of out of those three meetings with the ultimate um discussion, or the ultimate decision on what the budget will be. This is what's referred to as a bottom-up approach. It's a final approach. People use this approach all the time. There's nothing wrong with it. In municipalities, I typically see this most effective in entities where they have lots of money, low tax rates, and it doesn't really matter at all. You know, they can just kind of throw whatever out. Um it's not that it can't be effective in a situation like ours, because we are not that, that example where it works well. It just requires the board to be extremely disciplined and have a lot of knowledge on the administration of these departments so that you're, you're able to challenge what comes in effectively. Um you know, the, the, in defense of all the prior reports, nobody really has that kind of background. Nobody's ran a police department, nobody's run a public works department. It's very difficult for a board member to really kind of challenge any of that kind of stuff. So when things comes in, you know, a lot of times, quite frequently, you're, are going to approve what comes through, because you just don't know it better than people wants to, for sure. What you can switch to, uh I just kind of ran through this a little bit, I jumped my slides, but what you could switch to is something where you would just have three additional um uh process steps on top of what's already there. What's referred to as a top-down approach. So in a top-down approach, what board commissioners would do is set a number. And I, I would specifically refer to just major funds, the special purpose funds, like we talked about earlier, sewer funds and stuff like that. This would not pertain to that. Those are managed specifically for certain items, and uh as you heard tonight, you know, there's, there's things that are allocated to them. Uh they know exactly what the in and outs are gonna be, and they're managed to basically break even, sort of purpose. They're not really there for general operations. The funds in particular, we'd be interested would be the general fund and the fire fund, which our accounts refer to as the, the major funds. So what you would then, then do is set the numbers for those two funds. Township manager would then have the authority to go back and start chopping up the pie, basically. So we would make up a number. I'm just gonna use for the state, like, simple fifteen million, which is not the number, it's higher than our budget right now, but I'm I'm just picking a number. And then she would say, okay, police, you get seven, public works, you get three, so on and so forth. They would go through them, create their budgets, and then come back in um to the meetings, similarly similar fashion to the way you go with the person, the process works as it is today. So everything will get solid, they'll come back in, the board would then review everything that comes back in. And then we will go through a process that will be a little bit different. You'd have different conversations, because it would no longer be about the board going in there and saying, reduce this or cut that. It usually uh turns into what I like to refer to as the airing of the grievances, if you're a Seinfeld fan. Uh where the departments will come back and say, this is why this doesn't work, I don't wanna do this because of X, Y, Z. And then the board starts, you know, getting into the Q and A around, do we really wanna do it this way? Maybe we need to move that number a little bit, because we don't wanna give up what it would require giving up, and so on and so forth. So you're still having similar type conversations, but they're, they're changed, and they're coming from a different perspective. Where now we're not necessarily required to have that intimate knowledge of running a police department, for example. Um but we could just say, given the number that we created, are we willing, are we not willing to sacrifice uh what, what we have to give up to make this stuff work? It's a bit of a different process. Positive with that, um you know, we can start aligning income with structure. I mean, the reality is our top line's been going down, and taxes best. Taxes has value of our real estate has been declining, uh and it's still declining, can I play? So our top line number is coming down, our expense line is not going down, it's going the opposite way. So at some point, we have to bring that back into balance. This is an easier way to do that. It still lets the departments be in charge of their budget. We're not taking anything away from them. They can still create their budget and do what they need to do. Uh and and it lets the, the board get back to being more of those vision centers, uh policy centers, and so on and so forth, instead of getting involved in individual line items and trying to move things up and down uh from that perspective. It does also coordinate your departments a little bit better, because right now what happens, this isn't the fault of any department, and each department is making a budget in effect. Um so everybody's coming up with something. If everybody's coming up with an increase, Bob doesn't necessarily know what she's doing, and so on and so forth, and you have that misalignment. This way, everybody would know exactly what they're being allocated coming in, and you'd have more alignment within those departments. That's kind of it, in a nutshell. I'll leave it open for questions.
To me, this seems like an opportunity for the board to enter into the budgeting process with their eyes more open than they happen. And I'm not, again, it's not me being condescending to previous boards, or you don't have to be pejorative in any way. No, it's, 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 uh look, there's always opportunities to improve, and if you don't think that's the case, then I don't know. But maybe there's an opportunity to improve there. Okay, if you don't think there's always ways to improve, then that's fine. I think there are, and I think this might be one in it. And I think if we can get a better sense of the needs of the departments in the township without all of us having to be accountants uh in, in the budgetary process, I think that's probably a benefit. I'm not. That's not my competence, court competency. I can tell everyone here that confidently. I'm not an accountant and a financial analyst. That's not where I make my money. So I don't, I think if there's any opportunity for me to go into this process, I'll just speak for myself, if there's an opportunity for me to go into this process with my eyes more open to benefit the township, I think that's a good thing.
Well, I think you need the education process, so that will help that good township as well.
Normally, the way this works, you have liaisons from the, from that each department, and they roughly go over the budget with the liaison, and then it's presented to the whole board this week as necessary. And Jean has staff meetings every Tuesday. So they do interact with each other, and there is discussions held there, and I'm sure they talk about the budgets within this meeting. So that statement that they don't cooperate and don't know each other, they're operating in a vacuum, that's false.
I think this is probably seems like there's like offense being taken. I, I don't know if that was your intent, but I don't imagine that was the intent.
It's about what's probably said. I, I mean, clearly, literally, the process has not been effective, so we have to try.
Wait a second, what, what do you mean the process is not the effect? Don't you hear this township's past accounts budget? Is that not true?
You have, and I mean, you heard that from the accountants, that the general fund ran at a deficit of one point eight million for the budget. Where we actually end up, we'll find out, but the budget deficit was one point eight million dollars, and the accountants were very clear when they were there, oh, we cannot keep doing that going forward.
That's absolutely right. That's why I need more developed, commercial development in this township, so we can offset this.
Absolutely, but it's gonna take a while to, to get there. So there's gotta be two parts to the equation. We've gotta control expenses in the meantime, so we get the.
Oh, absolutely, and you're in, and you're insinuating that we haven't over the last ten, fifteen years?
I, I've been insinuating that it's been out of line. And, and the number's gone live.
In regards to what, expenses?
You know, the numbers here from, I guess, somebody who's, who's.
But now, Lord, anyway, as the financial person here, all I wanna know is who is gonna determine the level of services you as a group want to provide to us as the town? you as a group want to provide to us as the taxpayers and as residents? Somebody needs to determine who, what level of services you want to provide. After you determine what level of services you want to provide, the budget becomes a whole lot easier. But that's your job to determine. You need to tell us what level of services you wish to provide, which you are willing to sacrifice. And then after that, after that, wait, after that, then the budget will fall in order. Always it comes down to your capital fund. What are you willing to spend? What are you willing to replace? What are you gonna do? Are you gonna buy a new police car? Do you need to replace a police car? It comes to your big items. That's where it always ends up falling. But the bottom line is your job, as far as I see it, is to tell us what level of services you want to provide, and we'll do what else we gotta do. But that's what you need to do.
And I think we're starting by saying so.
Right, but you, like, just say, oh, that's somebody else's job. Tell us what your expectation is of what level of services you want to provide for your residents. And we'll tell you what the cost is associated with it. You already have union contracts. Those contracts are already established. That tells you what you are obligated to give. It tells you your pension. It tells you what your wages are. It tells you all those things. Those things are already set. And with that, that tells you what levels of services you're gonna provide with those amount of people. Now, if you want to give up services, or you're talking about maybe eliminate a personnel or something, that's a whole nother story. But you've got to start somewhere, and you are obligated, you should be giving us some kind of information as management staff here on what you want to do. And then we can do what we need to do and bring back something to you that is real.
That's exactly what's.
Exactly. Let's strike for both.
Yeah. So it's you come up with a number, and then you say, what kind of services?
Up with a number. You'll tell us what kind of services you want to provide.
With a number. The worst thing, we'll come up with a number.
You come up with a number, and you tell us how much it takes to run that police department. We'll tell you how much it takes to run that police department, the way, with the services that's provided now. That's how it's always been done. I don't understand why you wouldn't think that was the way it's always been done. It still always comes down to the bottom line of what are you willing to sacrifice if you're not gonna put up the mileage? What are you willing to do without, if you're not gonna do something else? That's, and that comes from.
Saying the same thing, part.
That comes from the board.
We agree with you.
Okay.
I think Mrs. McQuaid, as they've come in. I'm Sue McQuaid. I lived in the township for fifty-two years in the township. So you're right on the cusp of your budget, am I correct?
Yeah, literally, Thursday.
Thursday. That's pretty much on the cusp. Your proposal is to do this what? Down the road? What, I mean?
Oh, it's for this cycle.
For now.
Because it simplifies the cycle. So the meeting Thursday just turns into like, here's the number.
So you're just presenting that.
That's not true.
Have you been through a budget process before, you and Mr.?
In the township? No. But outside of the township? Yes.
I really care about the township, like, you know, is it, is it township that you're talking about?
Lots of corporate budgets.
Of course, it's different, sure. So.
It's the same thing.
It is.
Yes, it is. I would review probably a thousand units of my budgets too.
Come on along. Towns are supposed to provide services to residents. Police service, fire service, ambulance service, road construction repair, sewer service, business service oriented animal. So that's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to provide the services to the residents that they cannot provide for themselves. Now, if you want to live within the income we have, that means laying off police officers. It will, because you'll never have enough money to fund the casualties right now. And then, if you recall the police department, and it won't get the response that it'd get right now, because the group of the team will not be able to staff this guy.
We're, we're. I mean, that goes without saying, so, like, that goes without saying. The other side of that coin, like, yes, nobody's gonna deny what you just said, Ms. Leary. The other side of the coin, though, is if what you're saying is true, and we can't pay the expenses to cover service, the services we're offering, then we have to raise taxes. And if you ask anybody here in the townships, that's not what they want. So I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm not suggesting you're wrong. I'm agreeing with you, but I think it's a complicated, it's not as simple as, oh, we have to give.
But you have to decide, because the residents will not.
We're already there.
The residents aren't gonna be happy if their taxes go up either. So this is not, it's not, it's a lot in a hard place.
But I mean, we're laying off police officers, and we haven't even come up with a number yet. Like, we're.
To that, the township has to pay for most of the younger officers, who would be the ones way it off. We need to pay for their acquisition certification.
Nobody is talking about laying off police officers. That's like fear, mom.
And then leave them somewhere else. Be paid for them to get their certification. That's a waste of money.
We're weighing down our ratholes there.
You know, everybody's gonna spin on this now, if that makes sense to do it, or if you all are on board, it sounds like something that you'd really have to discuss amongst yourselves.
That's, that's exactly right.
To allow us, if this is complete, it makes sense. But when you're right in the middle of your budget, they don't know a lot about numbers. That's.
We haven't had any much of food to get.
They need two hundred. I mean, it's a lot of money that you're talking about, you know, doing on our behalf, and we're trusting you.
No, sorry. Just raise taxes. I mean, that's easy.
Are you gonna say we raise taxes when you're running system?
There's a better chance that we will. There's a better chance that we will.
I just talked about what happened with the sewer. We had someone here who wants police service on our particular street. You're talking to thanks.
Nobody's making promises. What I think Greg is trying to do is, is find solutions. And if anybody's getting mad at someone for trying to come up with a solution, I'd like to see their solution.
Solution to what? Deficit? The process? I mean, you can't.
I think the answer, the process. I think the process is leading to your deficits, yes.
I just want to know, because you're right on the thing. This is just a simple question.
Oh, it's simple.
That's a reasonable, that's a reasonable consideration.
Your budget right now, we do a personal budget every year. We don't wait until the time to try to switch it up of what was already good. We have to know. Every one of us here has to live within a budget.
Yeah, which is exactly what we're proposing.
During the deficit.
It's exactly.
Credit card debt is for people right now. So that's what happens. If it's something that's effective, and everybody understands the process, that makes sense. But if everybody up there, we're not the ones who vote. We can only vote for you people when you're up for election. We can't vote on anything. So we sit here and listen and count on you coming to some consensus and agreement on what works best. So for just one person or two people to say, this is how it should be.
That's not what's happening here.
No, my.
Greg came and presented this to the board so that we could deliberate it on, and that you.
I know.
Do exactly what you're doing.
I never said that. I just said, you all have to come to the consensus.
That's correct.
That's where it really has a draw, a question.
Yeah.
If the, I think what I'm hearing is correct, and I just want you to be clear. You're saying that the board would come up with a number for each different department and say, try and stay within this, and come tell us why if you can't.
Well, what I was proposing was more a gross number. Jean could have figured it out. Jean doesn't want to do it, we could have figured it out.
I'm just wondering where you come up with, how you're designing it, based on last year's budget, or?
So it would be trend analysis, I'd project, although a little bit of both projections.
I was just wondering how you were proposing to come up with the number at the beginning of the.
I mean, I can walk through the process of coming up with the number. I didn't prepare that tonight, but.
I was just here.
Yeah. Could you give a simplified overview? Because I feel like it would help. I feel like we're getting into like abstract things, without like everyone being on the same.
Effectively, what you would do is go through a bit of a trend analysis. So you can find all of our expenses over the last several years, all of our financial statements, public that are out there. You can run those numbers and see where the trends are going. I'm sure Jean has a projection for what the income level would be for the coming year. We can figure out exactly, well, we can also extrapolate that. Yeah, we could get close on it. None of, all of this is forecasting. So you're doing horseshoes and handkerchiefs here. Like, you're just trying to get close on this stuff. You would do the same thing for this year. So you'd be able to see, read out forecasts, what the numbers would be for this year. You have the best historical numbers, and you could run trends to see where we're headed. Right now, our trends on our top line are going this way, and our trends on our expense lines are going that way. That's not sustainable, not without coming in and intervening to increase the taxes substantially. I don't think people want to keep paying higher and higher taxes to sustain this. I think we've got to change the trend. So what you can do is.
So what happens with, so what happens with the institute, this process, and then we don't get any savings whatsoever?
Well, it's not about savings. We're saying, we'll do the process, we change the process, and we got no better results. To no expense. You know, you end up at the same spot, probably, at the end of the day, I think is the point that Andy's straddling at. But it's not about savings. You're not gonna, you can't jerk the wheel of the ship so hard that you capsized both. So that's where this comes in. Yeah, you have to kind of steer it a little bit to the turn, you know, slightly, and eventually you'll bring it around. So I mean, I have the expertise to do this in my sleep. I've done this many, many times now.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you look at the way it was proposed last year in the books? They, they do this already. I don't live in this township, and this would all lead to me. But I have now sat through three different times of this, so I can tell you how they do it. They look at all the years. As Mrs. Carpenter said, they say, I have like this need, let's say a police vehicle or a fire engine. They say it takes two years to get them. So then you budget for that. You, you, you put that in the budget. You say, you know, we'll have X amount of miles, or whatever your criteria is. And that, they do that now. You are coming up a little, I, I don't know. I'm gonna go on record. It's a little offensive, because you haven't sat through any of this budgeting. And they do that now. They talk every day. They, they, they know what their numbers are. They, they know what the projections are. They can give you years of data. They can see what the inflation rate is. These people keep excellent records. They can tell you how many miles they can get out of this and that. They know how much things cost. They, they, they get bids. They, they, they do their research. So when they come to the table with their budget, they have already done all this research and will say, you know, this is like the body cam, or the vehicles, or, like, they don't just wait up one moment and decide, I'm gonna have this outlandish budget. It does come back to services. How much is it gonna cost you to provide these services? It's not, it's not material needs that I personally want. How do I provide these services? And it's a total different mindset when you get into that versus like your household budget. Because your household budget is pretty much like needs and wants, you know, and, and the material things. These are not material things. These are services. These are service hours. So they already do this. And if I'm looking at Mrs. McQuaid accurately, this process is already kind of like, it's already in motion, because they're already like getting with their liaison, and they're already looking at their budgets, and they're already looking at, do I need a vehicle? Do I need tires? Do I need feet? They're, they're, they've already been doing that. So to say that two days before the first budget meeting is, it's, it's, I don't know, it's, it's, it's kind of silly. It's kind of backwards. Like, the time to talk about this might have been like maybe February. Like, hey, are we gonna do something different this year? Like, when, when Mr. Miller, William Miller, said, when are we gonna have the budget meetings? Maybe then would have been the idea to say, we're gonna change the budget process. And I'm sorry, then I tell that, you know, I, I sat through these and I sat through these, and I, I don't make, personally make any of the budgets. I take a lot of minutes. But, so what that means is, I don't really have a stake in the money. I just listen, and I learn, and I write things down. So that's, sorry for that.
No, it's great. I mean, so the fact that they have a budget already started makes the process a lot easier. Because then they can just go in and churn it back if they need to, if that's what happens.
But, but that's a word to discuss. That's why you sit around and, and you hash it out, and, and the board has a discussion. That's, that's what Mrs. Carpenter was trying to say.
Okay, then, no comment?
You are recommended. I hope to the board.
I think that makes really important.
Those who have new life with a district and a diversion, it's the fact that it seems like this process now, it's kind of that old, they don't need to change it. Means there are even more type of processes with expensive. To me, that feels better for accountability, but there's no more money to represent somewhere. And these five senior figures, seven years, and now it's gone. So much the majority was budgeting. But the board, the budget plan, you did, you see a lot. But to me, the deal has a new approach. Takes a lot of money to respond, you know, to help the show, to finish you.
Yeah.
And it almost makes it appear as if you have some number that you're wishing to achieve, that might not be the number. But when it's true, it's always that's mine. So, but I would encourage people to be, if you find you, it's a key to as, as a method. If you really want to talk and help, if you're one of your, uh, thought.
I do. I think that, to be honest, I think that's a very reasonable, somewhat advice, and I think that's fair. I know this is what we're going to hear.
No, it's, it's.
But it is, I think.
My decision, sorry.
There, we'll have to put this to a vote. I think we would if there's a motion, but.
So we want to make a motion?
Well, I, I make a motion that we stick to what we have this time around, and so that Greg and Andy can see exactly what's going on.
I'll see.
We need a motion to retain the same process.
Yeah, I mean, it just sounds like, you're just saying, no. I mean, I really need to get a motion to change up.
Not necessarily, but administration definitely needs to understand what you're, it's dropping down to do. We've got budget meeting on Thursday, and I can tell you from sitting in a budget meeting, the room doesn't look like this. The tables are all in squares. You can all see each other. Everyone's got a binder full of all of the general fund, the sewer, all of the different budgets, and you go through them one by one. So it's completely different than a meeting like this. So I don't think you need a motion to do it, but I certainly think that administration needs to know what they're being tasked with, to get you set up and ready to tackle, tackle this process there.
Yeah, if I could just finish those things first, cut off. I, I, I respect your point. I think it's, it's well taken from, on my, on my heart. I, I admit, grantedly, that I, I'm naive to the existing budget process. While I agree in spirit with what Greg presented, I think that in spirit, it makes sense. I think it's fair to say, sit through it the way it is first and understand it before we change things. So, so I think I would, I would agree with you. I think that it is, it is fair to kind of see through the process once, at least, before we change it.
You and Greg, we're by the last year, we sit through the budget process, and you know we showed up.
Yeah, I had a newborn baby, though.
Well, maybe it was a three or four month birth depression.
Things are all working good, I'm sure.
So, yeah, I don't think anybody, just to, maybe to wrap this up, I know we're all trying to get out of here. I, I think I just think it's worth stating that nobody's trying to blame, ask blame here. I don't think that's Greg's intent at all. I don't think Greg's saying anybody, any one person or one group of people is failing. I think what my impression is, is that we're trying to collectively find ways to improve. Maybe an idea gets thrown out there, and it's not a good idea. Maybe there's one that is a good idea. But if, if nobody else is throwing ideas out there, I know Greg throws a lot of ideas out. And maybe he, maybe he might, maybe I'll throw out a stinker every once in a while, but we need ideas. So I appreciate you bringing. So I appreciate you bringing that back. So I say thank you for continuing to push for improvement.
I just started grouping. I think what, what is, a new idea, or fresh ideas, for example, I think it's important that everybody listens with an open mind to those ideas, because it's really nobody's presenting an idea to the debt for the new township. They're all, they're all here for the veterans of the township. And they, they, if there's an open mind, that helps everybody. One thing I'd like to say is that the meeting on Thursday or any budget meeting does not have to be a multi-power swath through every line item. It doesn't have to be. We will proceed as the board would like to proceed. There are some times where there are arguments uh, about a a line item that seems like it's a, it's how many angels are dancing on the head of a pin, using a very old analogy. And and it's not necessary for it to be that way. We will attempt to, um, to be expedition, uh, freedom be.
I I have one last comment, because I I think which what was just said a minute ago was, was really important. That it's important for all of us up here and in general to have an open mind. And but what that takes is for ideas to be presented and to be challenged, both in good faith. And I think I would argue that throughout this year, we have seen time and again textbook bagged faith negotiation. And I think that needs to stop, because that is not open minded, and it's not making progress. And if I'm guilty of it, tell me. But I don't think I'm in any of the discussions we're having, arguing without earnest and good faith. I may be debating and may be coming from a naive perspective. Please educate me. But if you're arguing with bad faith, you shouldn't be here.
Okay, what we have left is the reminders. I don't know if Jean wants to make any comments on any of those. I'm not gonna read them, but if there's something in particular, he wants to point out. No. In regard to the zoning news work, uh, it's possible, I have to specify, we're zoning here in the board secretary. It's possible that it may end up being upstairs in the conference room. Um, so because we will make that plain uh, on the website and on the postings on the board, if that is the case. Um, is one thing I want to add about, uh, on item number B, is, um, you know, budget meetings have been advertised. Uh, in regard to election day, those have to be people will be working in the building, but the administration office will be closed in the public. Not the police department. Police department's still gonna be answering calls and doing all the things that the police department does. Uh, but the administration offices are gonna be closed in the public. They're only voting in here. For those of you who vote here in this precinct, we're just gonna ask you to be mindful. There'll be a lot of people running around. Uh, in the two thousand and election, election, excuse me, when voting took place here and was a hot and contested election, we actually had a line of voters waiting to vote all the way down to the wrecked building area. And that is, that is not a lie. Bob, Bob can verify that.
For three hours, somebody waited.
Uh, so, uh, even though there are more efficient voting machines now, and there's mail-in voting now, all other things, it could be quite a few people around here. If you are driving here, please be mindful that there are gonna be pedestrians and other cars, traffic and whatnot. So, um, and and we're all hoping that everything goes smoothly on the light day. That may be uh, hoping against hope, but, uh, I'm still hoping for it. Anyway, thank you very much for that PSA. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.